Okay, let's call it to order. City Clerk?
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Christ.
Present.
Man.
Present.
Marcus.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is by Bishop Don Sather from Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Evening Bishop.
Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful for this opportunity that we have of gathering this night, for the opportunity that we have of living in a land which grants us this freedom to do this. Bless those that are defending us freedom at this time that are away. Bless them and protect them and their families as they are separated. We ask thee at this time that thou wilt help us as a citizenry to love our neighbors as ourselves, that we as a community might be blessed. Bless the proceedings this evening. Bless those that come to bear their petitions, that they might be articulate and clear. Bless those members of the council, that they may have the blessings of wisdom and discernment as they decide the matters that are placed before them this evening. We're grateful for their sacrifice and please bless them and their families. Bless all that are here. Bless that they may return home safely and find all well there. And we ask for these favors and blessings in the name of our Lord and the Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. I want to do the flexible.
I'll place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight we have with us Amanda Haas. If you'd step up, I mean stand up, you don't have to step up. Do you have your speech ready? No, I'm kidding. Next council meeting, we're going to, I'll nominate you and we'll vote on putting on the Architectural and Design Commission, but between then and now, if anybody wants to talk to her, give her a call, she'll be happy to talk with you. Okay? Thank you. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
No action to be taken? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Unanimous. Are there any items on the consent calendar you'd like to pull for discussion, or do we have a motion and a second for adoption of the consent calendar?
So moved to adopt.
Second.
Let's vote. Unanimous, passes. We'll now open the public hearing regarding, public hearing item number one, and hear the staff report from the Planning Director, Brian Ludicki. Do you have speaker cards?
The first one is the analyst.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you thought you were going to get out of it? See that, see that look of anticipation?
Liz does it so well, but I'm not as good at it. Mayor Paris, members of the city council. The item that's before you this evening is a zone change on 20 acres at the northwest corner of 40th Street East and Avenue K-8. The site involved in this is shown on the map on the wall. This particular site has been proposed for development by Sunlight Partners as a 1.5 megawatt photovoltaic solar energy generating facility. That particular conditional use permit application was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission at the same meeting, March 21st, at which they recommended to you approval of the zone change on this site also. The reason for the zone change is that an RR 2.5 zone does allow, with a conditional use permit, the development of a commercial PV solar plant, whereas the current SRR zoning does not. The zoning designations, SRR and RR 2.5, as well as RR 1, are all acceptable zoning classifications under the general plan land use designation for this area which is non-urban. The primary concern that we have been aware of through this process is a concern by the neighbor that lives immediately to the south of the site regarding the appearance of the property and the project. And the primary concern is that there will be a chain link fence proposed around the facility. However, the applicant has agreed to provide adequate screening of that through landscaping. We have been in contact with both the applicant and the resident and have agreed that we will work with them through the process of creating the landscape plans for this site, and we believe we will achieve an adequate level of screening for that and create a site that's aesthetically pleasing in that area. We have recommended to you the introduction of the ordinance to change the zoning on the property to RR 2.5. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the zone change or the plant itself.
Any questions? Thank you. Mark Roberts.
Mike Reeves.
I'm sorry, what? Come on in. You have a speaker card, right?
I do.
Okay, come on in. Thank you.
Is it my time to speak?
It is.
Okay. So, good evening Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Mark Roberts. I represent the applicant, Sunlight Partners. We are a leading developer of distribution level solar generating facilities, and given the significant constraints in the Antelope Valley with respect to transmission level development, we feel that this type of project is probably the most responsible, is the most feasible, and most timely way to bring clean renewable energy to the city of Lancaster. We have been working closely with, with the planning department since August of last year to bring this project to fruition, and I would like to express our appreciation to everyone that's worked on the project so far. We've had a very good experience in working with the, everybody within the city of Lancaster. And I would, I would remark that we have projects going on in LA County, in Palmdale, in San Bernardino County, and I would say that we would like to do many more projects with the city of Lancaster. Due to the location of this project, so many of our projects are in the county and in the outlying areas where there isn't the close proximity to housing that there is with this project, and due to the nature of this project and location, I would like to make, make council aware that we, we have made significant changes to, to our design for this plant in response to some of the concerns that have been, been brought forward. Our, our normal or preferred design for this type of facility is what we would call a dual access tracking system. The reason for that is that generates the greatest output of revenue, which, when you're dealing with such small plants, is, is critical to its financial success. On this project, because of the concerns that Brian alluded to and, and some others that have come forward with, with respect to, to the visibility of the plant, we've actually redesigned and made this plant, we've put on this plant, single axis, what we call a low profile, single axis tracker. Our dual, the profile of our dual axis trackers is, the height profile, is 21 feet high at full tilt. So I'm, I'm, I want to just contrast that with where we are today with this project, which is our low profile, single axis tracker, which at stow position is around six feet. So what, what, what that does for us is, is it has reduced significantly the power output of the plant, as well as the revenue from the plant. We've done this to try to be a good neighbors to, to everybody in the neighborhood and make this successful for everybody. Having said that, I would like to just share a few remarks with respect to what, what Brian brought forward, which is, the, the home directly to the south has expressed some concerns about, about the plant being so close to the residents. We do have per Lance, per Lancaster's code on our site plan, approved site plan, we do have landscaping around the entire perimeter of the plant. We have expressed a willingness, as Brian mentioned, and I want to just reiterate that, a willingness to work with, with the landowner, with the city, to, to try to create a little, a little, if you will, faster growing, denser landscaping in areas of the site that will, will have the greatest impact and benefit to the, to the landowner and surrounding homes. So I think that, that would conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Reeves. Reeves?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Administration. Tonight I am coming to speak against the proposed conversion of a zone change for the purpose of solar energy. And the reason I oppose this right at the moment is that I think we need to slow down a little bit on this and involve the public. May I read you something that came out of the White House on March 30th? The nation has a goal of having 80% of our nation's electricity from clean energy sources by 2035, including renewable energy sources like wind, solar, hydropower, nuclear power, natural gas, and clean coal. Homes, businesses, factories consume over 70% of the energy we use. Through the different agencies, the federal government has invested in 100 cutting edge projects ranging from smart grid technology to carbon capture technology for energy vehicles. That's the goal of the country. Currently, as reported in the press, the city of Lancaster wants to sign an agreement with Topco Energy. And here's some of the things they say about solar energy when it's put on individual house, and I understand that we're talking about energy plants. But here's what their website says about solar energy. The system won't work at night on cloudy days, and we only produce one half of the It does reduce the electricity by 40 to 50%. The batteries for it need replacement every 10 years, and the system needs to be checked every year. Not mentioned by Topco Energy are the unpredictable effects of solar collectors placed in concentrated areas, and they can have an effect on the local environment. Rain conditions can be affected, and this problem is the result of the change of humidity by the solar panels. Before the city approves a, a zone change, I would like to see the mayor sit down in the council chambers and have an open meeting with the citizens of Lancaster so that we can ask questions about these concerns. As you know, citizens are very concerned about power plants these days, like Japan. And I think it would be beneficial if we postponed the vote on this zone change for a week, allowing the mayor to have a public forum to discuss this, so the citizens have a little input.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Brian Mills.
Mayor Paris and the council members, thank you for letting me speak today. I'm the homeowner that lives just to the south of this proposed development, and we bought this property five years ago to live in the rural area of the Antelope Valley, and, but still within the city limits to reap those benefits also. After attending two planning commissions and speaking with Mr. Roberts from Sunlight Partners, not to mention the strict requirements that the state has put upon Edison, I know I'm not going to be able to stop this development, sir, but I at least want to make it neighbor-friendly, if I may. Mr. Roberts stressed a lot of my concerns tonight, and I don't really need to be up here because I think he has addressed the concerns, not only verbally but in writing, but I wanted to thank you and thank the council for looking out for the citizens of Lancaster. This is a good thing, I'm not totally against it, but when you live next to it, there are concerns like this other gentleman, you know, has brought up. My family, my children, we all live within feet, certain feet of this project. Like I said, Mr. Roberts has made promises in writing and verbally. He's assured us that there'll be, you know, no noise emitting from the development, that lighting at night will be kept at a minimum. That's the reason we live where we live. I think the most important thing for me is not to step out of my home and see a six to eight foot chain link fence. I bought where I bought in a rural area for that reason, not to see chain link out there where we are, if I may. I have members of the city planning commission. I've spoke with people there that have assured me that we'll make sure that the things that have been put in place will be followed through with. Speaking specifically of the 10-foot planter that will be between the chain link and my property and 40th Street East, for people driving up and down the public street not to see this. I'm here today asking you if I can have the city council and the mayor to also help me with those, with those same problems.
You know, I don't, I don't anticipate you having a problem, but if you do, come see me.
Thank you, sir.
And it'll be fixed the next week.
I appreciate that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for working it out with them.
Rather than the chain link fence, what would you prefer?
I don't have a problem with the chain link fence. What I would like to see is the chain link fence to be covered by some type of shrubbery. I don't know if you can see here, if there's a pointer available, but the blue area is the solar, I, I call it a solar farm, if I may. Just to the south of that, you can see my five acres, which is a quarter of the blue I own the five acres here, and this is my home here. As you can see, as you can see, all of this is undeveloped around us, but I'm concerned primarily with walking out my back door, or front door, or people that drive up and down 40th Street East, which is quite busy because of Lancaster Baptist Church and West Coast Baptist College, I'm concerned with what they'll see driving by. Like I said, there's not a real problem with the chain link fence, but if the chain link fence was at least covered, and I think Mark mentioned that, to the area that I will see here and here along 40th, if that answers your question, sir. More like a shrubbery, a oleander, maybe. We did a real good job over at the soccer fields with the trees, they were fast growing there, something of that sort. Just, you know, you just don't buy five acres, you just don't buy rule to look at chain link, if I may. Agreed. Please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there a motion? Well, you have a discussion. Well, we have to close the public hearing. Closed.
I just had one comment, Mayor Paris, is Mr. Mills and I have talked at length about this situation, and I think we've come to a good conclusion, and the, the main situation is that we don't see chain link. I live in that neighborhood near there, and I also think that the city of Lancaster needs to set a precedent now of what these solar farms are going to look like throughout the city of Lancaster as we progress. So, I appreciate Sunlight Partners being so willing to help mitigate the differences or the, the concerns of the, the two neighbors that are out at 40th East. So I appreciate your help in that, and I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna end up being probably something that will be a good thing in the end. I don't expect any problems with it, and I'm sure Sunlight Partners is gonna help make sure that we don't see any chain link. So, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is a question for staff. I just want a clarification. So the landscaping is going to be around the entire perimeter, all four sides?
Yes, the, the approved plans show that. What we have discussed with the applicant as he indicated is, is increasing that in terms of density and coverage in those areas most affected, you know, by the site of the homeowner nearby.
Thank you. And I want to personally thank Mr. Mills for stepping up to the plate and allowing the intrusion into his neighborhood for us to be able to move forward with a project like this. So thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
That we introduce ordinance number 963.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Approved unanimously. Moving on to new business, item one. Deputy City Manager Jason Cottle.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity again to be presenting a, another solar partnership in a, hopefully a long line of successful ventures, not only for the city but for the community. As you know, city staff have been working closely with a number of different solar energy companies in an effort to develop, manage, and operate solar systems throughout the community. We've had some successes with Solar Lancaster, which allowed residents and businesses to retrofit their properties, to allow for solar panels to be installed. We're working currently, if you, those of you who came to City Hall, working currently on a solar project in City Hall parking lot, as well as solar panels on the roof. We've already accomplished improvements at Clear Channel Stadium, and also our institutional solar program in which we're working with the school districts to place solar panels, parking structures on not only the roofs of those facilities, but playgrounds as well as parking lots. The, the next phase of this project is going to be the commercial generation of solar energy in, in an attempt to partner with other entities to develop and sell energy to, to other utilities. Today, there's an MOU before you with Topco Energy, which in general agreement is for them to generate in partnership with the city up to 50 megawatts of power in various sizes, locations, dimensions, et cetera. That has yet to be determined. Under the agreement, Topco will own, develop, and operate these facilities. The city intends to, or the Lancaster Power Authority intends to own the power generated from these facilities and remarket that power to the entities or the, the end user of that, those electrical, or those kilowatts. The MOU also offers confidentiality to protect the proprietary information, not only of the company, but some of the, the technologies and panels that those companies will be using as well. As this relationship continues to develop, this MOU sets a framework for moving forward and author, offering your buy-in to this process, as well as allowing the company to understand that they have some level of agreement with the city. Any future detailed programs or operations will come back to the council for approval as we talk and as we figure out the details of the projects that are coming forth. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions? Any questions? You're off the hook. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve and authorize the city manager to enter into an MOU with a US Topco.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous approved. Council reports. Vice Mayor Smith.
So the sanitation districts, we did approve an ordinance that allows all businesses to apply for rebate, and when they show that they do get a rebate, that it is a permanent reduction ahead of time, because the way the sanitation district has worked before is that the businesses had to pay upfront and then prove later on that they used less water than they did through the sanitation district and then get their money back. And it was, in this day and age, that's just wrong, you know, it's too much, too much on the businesses. Some of the businesses are still paying anywhere from 13,000 to $20,000 for their sanitation bill, so we've also directed staff to go, not our staff, but sanitation district staff to do a new study, starting with the restaurants, to see what the actual usage is, so that everybody pays their fair share.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do. Ron, can you tell me how they ended up as two years rather than the one year that you proposed?
Well, we, I tried to do it with two years, but there was only one, one other vote. There was only two people, and I couldn't get the, I couldn't get the vote.
Who?
Jim Littford.
You know, the other, the other thing, I was present during the meeting, just for, just for record, and what was real frustrating is, there was about eight, I believe, businesses that were aware, so thus they applied for the rebate, and the rebate was anywhere from 40 to 70%. And there was a discussion over whether or not businesses really could qualify. That, to me, is, I just couldn't understand the rationale on that, so why we had to defer to two years.
Right. One of the main things that we're, we're looking at in their budget is the reason why they wanted to raise the rates, and not this meeting, but the meeting before that, I was able to, you know, stop the new Prop 218 going forward to raise everybody's rates again, is that I said, we have to delay it because once we're online with the recycled water, there was nothing factored in for the sale of recycled water. There was, you know, there's 23 million, I think it's 23 million acre feet, isn't it, Robert? Something like that. I mean, it's, it's, it's a large, it's a large amount of recycled water that's going to be produced from that plant, but yet they don't calculate the sale of that water to offset the cost of running that plant to the citizens or the ratepayers. And so I said, let's delay it until we find out, you know, and then, and then the argument was, well, we don't have any signed contracts, and I proposed, I said, well, the city of Lancaster will take all of it. Because we'll have, we'll have end users, so the county's gonna have to put up and sign on the dotted line in the future so that we actually can sell that water to, that plant was very expensive.
I'm not quite sure why I don't get paid per flush now. I mean, it's my flush, right?
Yeah, we, we.
Councilmember Christ.
The ABTA, we're looking for a new CPA for audit service. We're looking for new legal services. We're looking for a new executive director. We're looking for a new CFO. And we received the preliminary report from the investigator, Deborah Rice, and it's, we'll be going to criminal investigation now, and it'll soon be open to the public. Other than that, we're in good shape.
Marvin, you're just gonna have to learn to get along with people. Any questions?
No questions.
Good. I thought we had an executive director. What happened? Had she decided not to take it, or?
No, we're working out the costs.
Oh, I see. Okay. So she's still interested?
She's still interested in.
I thought she was highly qualified, so I hope that happens.
She is very qualified. We're looking at it on the 19th.
Okay. Thank you. No action on the financing authority. City Manager?
Yes, sir, I have three announcements. First, we have the Poppy Festival this Saturday and Sunday. I hope everyone comes out to Lancaster City Park from 10 to 6 on each day. The weather's going to be spectacular in the 80s, and so hopefully we'll have a great turnout. We had a exceptionally good press conference on the US Topco partnership on Friday. One of the things I want to compliment staff, led by our communications, but all our staff here that day, we literally put that thing together in 24 hours, and it took a lot of work by staff to put something on of that magnitude with that professional air about it and put a tour and luncheon with it, too. So staff did a yeoman's job that day. And lastly, if you have not been to the Boulevard, all I can say is wow when you see the new theater. theater next to El Pac. It is just incredible, and it just struck me today as we were walking, I was walking with the mayor today, and it struck us how beautiful it is, and I don't think we've had a theater on the Boulevard, a movie theater, since the old antelope was torn down, so really spectacular, and it's just, it's worth the trip down there.
Whose idea was that theater? It was actually Ron Smith, just so you know. He was the one who had the idea. He went to the developer, he made it happen. So, when you're watching movies down on Lancaster Boulevard, you can thank the vice mayor. It was his, his idea.
But we could thank somebody even more, is it was Scott Erlich and...
Well, he did build it, so.
And Dave McEwen. If it wasn't for Wa and Scott Erlich, we'll say Dave had an integral part in making the financing happen, so it's a, it's a, really such a team effort as, as always, it's, they did a great job.
It's impressive. Okay, the next two items, I'm gonna move to the end of the calendar. I guess we call it an agenda. In court, it's a calendar, right? Okay. The Walk with the Mayor program, we're reinstituting that. Unfortunately, I don't have the time to do it as often as I would like, but it has been an incredible experience, and so what I would like to propose to you guys is that we all take a day, and we get other leaders of the community to take days also. And we'll no longer be Walk with the Mayor, it'll be the Mayor's Walk. So, if you would think about that and talk about it to other people who might be interested, it's actually a lot of fun when you do it. The problem is, is my calendar has gotten to the point where it's almost impossible. So, okay. We're going to be going to closed session to talk about the Rubin case, which is over the prayer initiative. In regards to that issue, the city will be setting up a website, setting up a legal defense fund in support of the city's right to pray at these meetings. And we would hope everybody would send in a dollar, two dollars, five dollars. Oh, Mr. Haas. And whatever you, and whatever you would like to do, Mr. Haas.
I think he's giving all his money to a lawsuit right now.
Yes.
Soon as that's done, then.
Sometimes I'm embarrassed for lawyers, okay? Now, moving on. Let's recess to closed session. We'll be back in a few minutes.
I'll let the record reflect that the mayor had some pressing personal matter that he was, that he had to take care of, so he turned the chair over to me. Mr. McEwen, could you give us a, an announcement on the closed session item?
Yes, sir. The city council met in closed session under government code section 54956.9A concerning Rubin versus Lancaster, received a status report on that case, and no further action was taken.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for public business from the floor on non-adjourned items. Any person who would like to address the redevelopment agency or the city council on non-adjourned matters may complete a speaker card. You'll find the speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the council, the city manager, and city staff will be able to contact you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you start to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have thirty seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
David Paul?
Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. I wanted to say something fun and happy tonight, so I was gonna tell you a story. The other day, somebody said to me, how do you maintain your optimistic point of view and have such a dim view of the future? And I don't have a dim view of the future. Our future is based on random possibilities, you know, the decisions we make today. That, that's what constitutes the future. But also, I, I like to use the mental technique of waking to the wonder of the day, and I have to do that many times a day to right myself. And one of the ways I do that is to employ sayings, quotes, I remember certain things, or just general universal concepts. And one thing I like to think about for the last forty years, this has just comforted me, I think about the five planetary motions of Earth, and our Earth revolves on its axis, and it brings us night and day, and it wobbles, and it brings the progression of the equinox, and then it rotates around the sun and gives us our seasons and the concepts of the year. And then it rotates with the sun and our solar system around the galactic center like a giant pinwheel. This takes 270,000 years. And then, the entire galaxy is blowing through space off in that direction at speeds that we can't even comprehend. Now, eventually, it's gonna run into the galaxy Andromeda, and I, I think about that as like two swirls of cream in a cup of coffee. They'll eventually come together and mingle and create a whole new thing. But one thing that fascinated me, a couple weeks ago, I was watching a show on this Andromeda collision, this inevitable, and the guy was saying that because of the vast distances of intergalactic space, even when these two giant galaxies merge together, no single star will collide, because there's so much vastness in between it. And that's just galactic space. Interstellar space is so vast that we can't comprehend it, and, and, and these are the things that make me both humble and ennobled, because I'm part of this wonderful creation, and all we have to do is our best and spread joy, and that's what I love to do, and thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you. Cynthia Spears?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, city council members. I was here back in February with the request for Change Lanes Youth Support Services to receive support from the city council. The mayor did state at that time that he would come over to the facility and take a look at it. However, that never happened. I was able to meet with Lee DeRico and Lieutenant Downton, who has since then transferred out of the Sheriff Department, right there on, what is that, Division, RCRA Highway, you know, right over there. So, I'm here tonight to put in another request for support. Change Lanes will be going on our sixth year in June of this year. We provide services to at-risk probationary youth, also youth that are transitioning in our community, that are dependent in the juvenile justice system, foster care, substance abuse problems, the whole nine yards. We are a, pretty much a one-stop shop for our youth. They can come to us and get everything they're need, they need in that one particular place instead of traveling all throughout the community, and their family members as well. The meeting with Lee, I feel, wasn't very productive, so I'm here tonight to see if I can possibly meet with the, the next person available to meet with me, to discuss our organization, to hear us out, to just give us the opportunity to, to just let you guys know what's really going on over there and the kind of support that we need. We've made all the cuts that we possibly could. We've let go of all of our paid staff. We're currently working on staff, volunteers, all from California State University, Bakersfield, who've been so generous with their time and their commitment at Change Lanes. And we are in need of support, and I'm here to just ask one more time if we can meet with the city council and let you guys get a little bit more information about us and, so you guys can see what we need. And just to let you guys know, this has been a humbling experience for us. We are not used to asking for help, but it's something that we need to do at this time, and that's where we are, and that's what's, what our request is. And I brung a, a PowerPoint, pretty much, I don't know if I could give it to anyone here of our agency, what we do and what we need.
Hey, if you could please give it to staff there, and, and Mr. Bozignin, could you maybe look that over, have some staff member look it over, and just give us a little, the council a little briefing to see, so we can have the information to, to see what we're gonna do. Can't promise anything, but we'll, you know, once we get the, the written material and stuff, we can look at it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, good luck, man. It says Larry Walton, Tony Walton, Jim Phillips. Gonna do it as a tag team?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members, and councilwoman, staff. Myself, this is my wife, Janice, and Jim Phillips, who is owner of Crown Tacos, we're the owners of Subway right on Tenth and Now. I believe your city manager invited everybody to come out, so I'm pretty sure the city manager saw that eyesore when everybody does come by the park there, right by Costco, it's a big eyesore there. And we've been very patient, it's been two years now, two years, two months.
What eyesore?
At the, right on Tenth and Now, where Costco had sold, sold the property out to a Jiffy Lube, the Easy Lube, and it's been two years, two months, and it's a very bad eyesore. We get a lot of our customers coming in, there used to be about a hundred and twenty parking spaces there for all the business there that was there prior to years and two months ago. So, we're asking the council tonight, maybe, to, to look into it and deal with staff. We've called staff quite a bit to see what's going on, and we don't get anything back from them, so we're hoping tonight, maybe now that it's on record, that maybe they can deal with it. So, I'm hoping that I'm not bothering people's times, you know, bothering, I'm just coming as a person here, as we in the community. I know people here have to do other things, so I don't wanna bother anything else. But I hope that you can definitely look at it, look into it, and get some guidance, and maybe get somebody to get on it. It has become a safety issue. I'm always shooing off a lot of young kids that are seven, eight, nine, so I don't wanna see an issue there. You know, I don't wanna see.
I misunderstand. You say the Jiffy Lube is an eyesore, and it has seven-year-old kids there?
No, Jiffy Lube was going to construct a Jiffy Lube in the Costco at the front of Tenth. They were allowed to stockpile, and there's a huge dirt and everything, so we waited to, through, them to go through bankruptcy. Code enforcement has started to, an investigation, and is going to work on it, and we will take care of it.
Any reason I bring to your attention is that the last couple weeks, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, is that children are out there, and there's some poles out there, iron rod and rebar. So, you know, had to shoo them off of it, and the young little kid that was there, that was about seven, almost got his stomach into it. So, the next innocent that can happen is to have something very seriously happen there, so I'm just hoping that you can guide it to the, I see that staff is aware of it, but to see if maybe we can expedite it, expedite it, and maybe make something else there.
And with the Poppy Festival coming up this weekend, that's what everybody sees, and we have the soccer tournaments that are about three miles away from us, and when the people come into town, they're from out of town and may even want to move here, but they always ask us, why hasn't that been fixed? Doesn't the city care? So, that's why we're here. We just would like something done.
No, no, I, I think, and you know, just so you know, Liz Brubaker, our staff member, we have a loving nickname for her, she's the pit bull. So, if she's on it, I'm sure it's gonna be taken care of.
That's good. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
David Aber.
Lyle Talbott.
Thank you. I want to bring you an update on this Palmdale powerhouse that will affect the children in this community, if it ever goes into production. They built a sewage pipeline down there to cool down the power plant from Lancaster to Palmdale on Avenue M. It, the issue's before the California Energy Commission right now. Our group, Decap, has submitted our brief, and so have the proponents from Palmdale. We're awaiting the outcome. And I'd like to say to Mr. David Paul about this cosmic collision, maybe when he's mixing that coffee, he ought to try Decap, it might calm him down. And a good word from Ms. Brubaker, some of these neighborhoods are looking good, thanks to your efforts. And Ms. Marquez, I'm still awaiting your phone calls about the power plant. It's nine four two, four two oh nine, my number, area code six six one. I'll see you on April nineteenth at the, are you listening, Ms. Marquez? Apparently not. It's okay. I noticed a lot of your, your folks and staff are texting. I hope they're not causing any problems for the Brown Act. You all heard the term "yellow journalism"? This is the Antelope Valley Press, and they had a story here about, from your city attorney, David McEwen. These filings, like a number of lawsuits we have, they're a big drain on public resources that ought to simply go away. Well, how about another one? If I don't hear an apology from Mr. Smith, Ms. Marquez, by the next meeting, I will be submitting one more of those, all those lawsuits that have no public merit or something. Bishop Henry Hearn's told me to not be too rough on you, Mr. Smith. I'll wait for your apology, and he said God blessings for me. This morning, I bought him oatmeal. You have a problem with sewage? Talked about, you can blame that on Pete Knight, who right in these chambers about five or six years ago, when the Edwards offered us acreage for drying my, drying beds, he said, hell no, you give them an inch, they'll take a mile. You might have read my letter on that one. I try not to be inductive in my diatribes tonight, so you will hear from me later, unless I hear from you first. Thank you.
Jim Borletta?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Ron Smith, and the members of the council. I don't have anything to complain about. Maybe that's refreshing. I would just like to say, keep up the good work. What I've seen happen in this city in the last few years, especially since Mr. Perez came on board, is just amazing. And of course, he had the help of the council, naturally, and I want to thank every one of you. Also, I want to thank city manager and staff. It takes everybody working together, but it's just, it seems like the city is working like a clock. Everybody working together, and that is really nice to see. And it's, it's just nice to be living in a city like this, where, where this is going on, you don't have corruption like you have in other cities. And the Boulevard, when that was first announced, I called myself, my god, ten million dollars. I've seen a city change the Boulevard. I've seen a city change the Boulevard a couple of times in the past, and wow, that's a real change. And I guess I have to tip my hat to you, Mr. Smith. It's, it looks great. But there again, thanks to the entire council. And all I can say, gentlemen, is I don't have any complaints. I'm just happy. Please keep up the great work. I appreciate it for one.
Thank you, Mr. Borletta.
You bet.
And it truly is a team effort. We have an amazing staff, and amazing council, and an amazing mayor, and we really do. It's, that's why we're moving forward, so. Okay, V. Woods? V. Woods? Put a card in? Okay. Okay, that's it for the public comments. I, I think we skipped over, because we, you know, the mayor switched it around. Council agency comments? No, we didn't. We did the reports. Comes after public business. It's on your agenda, right on the-- Okay. Is that your comment for tonight? Okay, anybody else?
I did have a comment. I was, just wanted to mention that the Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission has received the report from the consultant about the feasibility of having a Lancaster Public Housing Authority. The LNBC has a subcommittee that is overlooking that, taking comments, requests, remarks, questions from the rest of the commissioners. The chair is going to compile all those, and they're working through those, and will come back to the LNBC on May third, I think it is, for recommendation. And then the recommendations will come to the city council. I'm looking forward to that. And I'm looking forward to the Poppy Festival this weekend. The weather's going to be gorgeous, and the poppy fields are going to be gorgeous, and we're going to have a great time. I hope everybody comes out and participates.
Yes. Yes.
Can I, when you're done, I'm sorry for interrupting, maybe have Bob tell a couple of the bands they're going to be out there, too? Because I think it's going to be pretty good this year.
Are there going to be any baby pigs?
Yeah, I'm interested to see Mark's pig.
That's, that's not what I intended by this portion of the comment.
It was a good setup.
It's a--
He teed it up, boy, you're wrong.
It's a hot-belly pig.
Teed it up. There you go, Bob, okay.
No, actually, we do have some different entertainment. I don't want to call it Lion King, but we have a lot of the performers, including one of the lead performers on Broadway that performed in that. And so we will have a reenactment of that on Sunday afternoon, three different performances. A number of the dancers that were involved in the Martin, or Martin, Michael Jackson tribute that we did with Thriller, the Boulevard event, so they'll be involved in this event. But we have a couple of cover bands, too. We have an Eagles cover band, and we also will have another group for Elton John, the Young Elton John. So something a little different, and it should be really good entertainment. The weather, hopefully, plays right into our hands. Should have a good crowd.
Man, it gets bigger and bigger every year. It's so much for the kids. I love the, that little zoo animal area that you have. I mean, we had exotic animals and the demonstrations with the Eagles, and it's--
That is all there again, and then more. There'll be some additional things. History of Lancaster, we have a new venue that'll be out there that our former curator, Norma Gerba, has put together. It should be very interesting. A lot of history that people don't know, so that'll be available. If you indulge me for just one second, I want to thank one other city staff, and that's Josh Thomas, who last week coordinated the efforts for the city staff who were out at the Relay for Life Walk. He did an incredible job. He and Bev in the planning department, who spent the night out there in about thirty-seven degree temperatures. But we had a lot of staff at three and four in the morning that went out there and walked, and somewhere around, I think, eight hundred laps is what people did. That's pretty impressive. It was a good turnout. So he did a great job on that as well.
Probably volunteered.
Absolutely, he did. He does for every event.
Yep. That's great.
Mr. Green, I, I just want to know, are they going to have the deep-fried Twinkies this year?
I believe they are back, under the healthy living sequence, right?
Okay, anything else? Okay, that being the case, we're adjourned. There's no date on here for me, so I can, here, let's see here. Adjourn till Tuesday, April twenty-sixth at 5:00 PM. Thank you.